Good afternoon, everyone. Devin Knight, welcome. May the St. Xavier Hills regular schedule, St. Xavier Hills Department of Education meeting, come to order. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as reflected? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next item is to approve the minutes that have been distributed in advance. And a motion to approve?
Seven minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Freeman?
Right. We have a large group here today to see Jerry, and he's not here. A lot of folks here, thank you, I appreciate it. We'll work real quick to get you in and out as quick as we can, but a lot of folks to introduce tonight. First, I would like to introduce those who do not know her, but Jacqueline Hudson is our newest board member, surprise.
Hi.
And she's in the front row here, be joining us in the G Board meeting. The council approved her as our newest board member. Take care, you guys play six months. So welcome, glad you're here. We have a number of teacher leaders here in our group that are required to be here. If you're in the teacher leader group, would you raise your hand? Bunch in the back, yeah. We'll have some chairs for you in a few minutes. Okay, all right. On to business. Back in February, I believe it was, we had a group of competitors for the HOSA, which is our Health Occupations Group, our Health Science Group, that competed and has some state championships. Hannah?
Yes.
Come on up. Hannah Peterson is a teacher in our Health Science Department, and she has several students with us. I want you to introduce them since you're here. We have three students that are state champions, right?
We do. We have three students. One could not be here tonight, Luke Byrd, he is sick, but his competitor, his teammate, Aaron Bard, is here.
Come on up there.
They placed last year second place at state, qualified them for Nationals, and they placed second at Nationals. This year, they placed first in state and will be going back to Nationals this summer. So we're excited about that. And then Ian Schultz. Come on, Ian. This was Ian's first time competing in sports medicine, and he placed first at state in sports medicine this year. He is also one of our first completers of our Health Science Program.
How many years have we had our Health Science Program?
This is our third year, so this is our first or our last year of new classes in the sports medicine pathway.
And how many years have we competed?
This is our second year competing, no, third year. Third year competing, we've competed all years, which most programs do not compete until their second or third year, and we have competed every year.
Very good. So your career routes, have you thought about? Sure you thought about this, what you're thinking of after a quarter?
So, like, my personal career choice, I'm hoping to go to UAB for medical school and then become a neurosurgeon.
That's great. Well, we're glad we got the program hanging, you've done a great job. Thank you guys for selling, winning state championships. Just a couple of weeks ago, the membership of our Future Business Leaders of America attended the state conference here in Birmingham, always a big conference, and we have state champions there as well. Morgan is with us.
Yeah, and Pam and Mr. Johnson.
Oh, good, very good. Come on up, yes. Peter Johnson.
And Pam Hickman.
Pam Hickman, all right. So you guys introduce whoever else is here, we've got some of them that are qualified for Nationals.
I'm gonna read to make sure I get there again right. So we have Anna Shaw, who got first place in Introduction to Business Communication. Annabelle Bridges, who got fourth place in Global Business. And Max Palasco, who got first place in Accounting I. And Kendall Tucker got first place in Accounting II. Is that everybody from the LA that's here? We had nine winners, and then we have four that were able to make it here today.
All right, and so we're gonna compete in San Antonio this summer for the national conference, and they all will attend that as well. Can you imagine winning state championship in accounting?
You wanna look at this all report?
We're just really proud of these guys, they've worked hard. I was on maternity leave for 12 weeks, and they still worked hard, and I tip my hat to the rest of the advisors. But we have some really good kids, and I'm just so thankful to work with them.
I think Future Business Leaders of America do a great job preparing. While they may not be in quote-unquote "business," it's the preparation you get for job skills, all the soft type skills, and we talk about good employment skills, and does a great job on that, and they'll be ready for college, whatever career path they choose. Congratulations, good luck this summer. Just a couple of weeks ago, right around the same time they were winning state championships and qualifying for Nationals, this student body at the high school celebrated what I think is just the crown jewel of one of the beliefs in our system, and that is that service is a civic duty. And one of the parts of our mission that we think is so important is that we have unparalleled community support, and I think that we embrace the notion that that's not a whole lot about taking, that's as much about giving back to the community. And RISE is just that, so is that event. So ask Kim Pruitt and her team, leadership team of RISE, to be here tonight, to be recognized, and just to tell us the accomplishments that we've had tonight. So Kim, come on up if you will, and just talk us through what this stellar group did and introduce them. Some of them have been on our strategic planning team, all other sorts of things, so they stay very busy. But Kim, introduce them if you will, and tell us a little bit about them.
So this is Douglas Thompson, Avery Richardson, Mary Hamlin-Hutton, and Ben Berantine. These are our four senior top chairs. We actually have about 36 students in leadership positions. We have 220 students that served on RISE committees. We have 103 students who served on RISE teams. The fact that we made $250,678 is honestly, a side note, I hate to say that, it's an amazing amount of money, I'm very, very proud of that, but I'm really more proud of the service that these, all of these students collectively did. RISE is something that is for every single student in the whole school, are welcome to be a part of it. RISE stands for Rebels Impact Through Service and Engagement, and we engaged, and we engaged the entire community in this event. We raised the money for the UAB Comprehensive Cancer Center, and in the next couple of weeks, the Comprehensive Cancer Center is gonna present us with a variety of options for this money to go directly to, and our students are gonna be able to choose that, which is pretty amazing.
That is fantastic. Lisa Baker aboard behind you, wants to say a few words, I think, to add some, I think a lot of strength to the power of what you guys have done.
So, you know, Avery, don't cry.
No, stop.
You know, many of you know that, I mean, this isn't really an issue that is near to endure to many of us, I think many on the board, and I think, you know, looking at the stadium that night and seeing all those lights go up, you know, that you'd be very hard pressed to find somebody who isn't impacted in some way by cancer. And the thing I really wanted to tell you guys is, the amount of money that you raised is amazing, and it is life-changing. And I think when you're on the other side of that and you're hearing the diagnosis, you know, it's a real person that you guys are impacting, but the best part is, it's a person you don't know, right? So as you go out, you know, you guys are all gonna be, you know, super successful and all that, but remember what you did with this event, because you not only, you know, baked a cupcake or, you know, made stir fry, which was amazing, but, you know, just, I mean, all these different things, but you really mobilized a whole community for a cause that was greater than yourself. So if you guys would keep doing that along the way, remember that it's okay to do something for someone that you don't even know, okay? Because they will appreciate that. So I'm just so proud of what, you know, Kim has done with you guys, and just the work that went into this, because it's just amazing, so.
Guys, is there anything you all want to say? You're too tired. Lisa, thank you, I appreciate that. In all of this, the decision was made by RISE to bring all their dollars back locally, so the UAB Comprehensive Cancer Research Center will benefit from this, and that is tremendous. So you represent a large number of people who contributed greatly to this, including the community, but it is just, there's not words to describe, I think, and you cannot put a value or a grade on what they have taken from this experience, so kudos.
If I can say one more thing, it's rare for any event, no matter how big, to raise that amount of money, and most fundraising efforts that go on in our city or anywhere have a small number of really big donors. We had a large number of people who just supported in, you know, little bits along the way, and that's what makes it special, too, is the number of people who were involved. We had eight events involved in the semester that involved community members from little kids who came to the carriage of breakfast, to runners, to concert-goers, and everything in between, I hate to keep talking about it, but I'm so proud of not just these students, but the entire student body, but these four were such shining examples, and we have a few others that I see in here who were involved as committee chairs and whatnot. And we're actually up, we're in a top-ten finalist for a national award for community service projects, so we'll let you all know in a couple weeks if we get it.
Fantastic. Thank you all. Come on up. I asked Whit to put this together, it's kinda awkward, one of these, they wanna put it together for themselves. The Alabama School Public Relations Association has an annual award ceremony, and last year we won an award for the Best Annual Report, and so for the second consecutive year, we won the award again from the Stadia Association for the Annual Report, so congratulations, Whit, for putting that together.
Thank you.
Another thing that I think was a collective good that was done, really a couple of years back, started a couple of years back, when this board, and at the time Superintendent Dr. Mason, put together a community engagement effort as it related to restructuring schools, and that too won a state award, and I think that's fantastic, and it's up actually for national awards as well. I think it speaks to the unparalleled community support of the willingness of the board and the Superintendent Dr. Mason to lead in asking for feedback and determining what the best means of moving forward with this restructuring was. So kudos to you, to Dr. Mason, to Whit for that work as well.
Thank you, Matt.
Dr. Freeman, it was interesting when Dr. Mason was leading that, because he'd come from high-growth suburb of Atlanta, and so he said, over there, they just sent you a postcard in the mail and told you where your kid was going to school that year, so the whole community engagement thing was unique for him.
Well, it was a consensus builder, if I remember right, there were well over 80% that agreed to the path that the board was considering the recommendations, so fantastic job. So if you need to leave, I certainly understand, we have a very interesting report we're about to do on our audit, but if you need to go, that's okay. Way to clear, right? Yeah. For real. Well, members, we have completed the fiscal year 2018 audit. Brian McPhee from Carries and Ingram is here to report out on that. Brian, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And I know you've got a tough act to follow, but thank you.
All right. I hope each of you have a copy, it says draft on it, but this is the final report, we just did not have time to get the final copies banned this week, and after you guys, they'll be coming later this week. And before I get started, I wanna thank Courtney and her staff for the jobs they did, as being responsible, as they worked our needs in helping us get done as quickly as we did. If you'll turn with me to page one, and I'm just gonna hit the high points here. Page one is our independent audit report, this is the standard report that we issue in conclusion of the audit, and it offers an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. And I'm gonna move over to page eight. This is the balance sheet for the system. Governmental accounting is basically built on fund-level statements, on modified accrual basis of accounting, which means they report current assets and current liabilities with no long-term assets or liabilities showing. And if you look at this schedule here, where I wanna point out, at the top, we have $32 million in cash at the end of the year, with $1.8 billion in cash with fiscal agent, which is debt service funds. And if you come down to the bottom, the fund balance, which is really the most important category, this is the equity section of the funds that we have available to operate on, and the unassigned balance at the bottom, $27.5 million is what we have available for current operations at the end of last year. Now, I will point out, that balance is down $3.5 million from the year before, but that's to be expected, because we're in heavy construction investment stage, so that's not, that's not expected at all. If you'll move with me over to page five. This is the statement of net position, this is the balance sheet, basically on full accrual basis of accounting, and the additions here over what you saw in the previous statement are the non-current assets, which are property and equipment, and at the end of the year, we had 150, roughly 158 million in debt, property, and equipment that is unappreciated. The prior year, we had 135 million, so you can see we're up about $22 million there. On the next page, this is the liability section, page six. Two things I wanna point out here, in the non-current liability section, you'll see two, the final two line items in that section, total OPEB liability, $47.8 million, and the net pension liability is $65.2 million. These liabilities represent basically actuarial liabilities that are gonna be viewed payable over the next 35 years. The pension liability was reported a few years ago under Gatsby 68. This past year, we had Gatsby 75, which probably doesn't OPEB apply to it. So I wanna stress that although we're picking up a large liability, it's really hurting our unrestricted net position down here at the bottom, making it go into a large deficit position, these liabilities don't impact how we operate and how we fund these plans. So you basically can take these liabilities, add them back to your bottom, to your bottom-line number, and look at that, it's what you have to operate on. Moving with me to, this will be page 48. This is the schedule of expenditures, the federal awards. These are all, these are all the federal programs listed down to the left that we operate as a board, and all of the expenditures that we have totaled $1.0, basically $10 million, $1.998 last year. Now, if you'll go with me to page 52. These are the final two reports that we issue as part of the audit. This first one is our report, or I'm sorry, not page 52, it'll be page 50. This is our report issued on an audit, and of course, the government auditing standards, commonly referred to as the yellow book report. Government auditing standards require us to do two things. One is to consider internal control and evaluate it as we plan our audit and conduct the audit, and the other is to determine or test compliance with contract laws and regulations. As far as the internal control goes, we had no findings that came up here in the audit, and we had no issues with compliance, so we have an opinion here. And if you go with me to page 52, this is the final report that we issued. This is our report on an audit of internal control and compliance under uniform guidance, this is our federal program audit. And so the uniform guidance requires us to do two things, in a similar nature to the yellow book report, we have to go in and assess internal control over compliance, and to test those controls for a low-control risk assessment, and we had no issues or findings with the internal control. And the final thing that we have to do is to test compliance, and there are about 15 different compliance requirements that the federal government requires us to test, and we had no issues of non-compliance that were required to be reported under those standards. So overall, a clean opinion, and the board is in good financial standing going forward. If anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer those.
I'd like to be on this side of it better, Courtney, or...
I appreciate the work that I do, and I echo what Brian said, Courtney did a great job stepping in late in the fiscal year, taking it over and finishing up strong where it had begun, and some fantastic job moving forward, and so anytime you get an unmodified opinion, there's nothing better you can do, so make a place where that works. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. On to item five, financial statement.
More exciting news today. So you have the March 2019 financial statements and check register for your review. I wanted to point out a few things on the March 2019 budget comparison report. Local revenues from property tax collections are at 92% as of March 31 compared to 98% at this time last year. The difference is due to a more conservative budget of local revenue last year, which allowed us to reach our budget goal much earlier than this year. I know I've been telling you for the past couple of months that we've been behind compared to last year, and our, so far, our collections have caught up, we've received the bulk of our tax money for the year, we'll have a little more trickle in, and I've calculated that last year, we got almost $3 million from April to September, so if we keep going at that pace this year with no projected increases, we will meet our budget at 100% as of September 30. Total expenditures compared to budget are in line with prior year at 52%, and as of March 31, we have transferred $11 million to the capital projects fund for construction, and this is half of the $22 million that we had budgeted for 2019.
So the timing issue's normalized, and then the rest of it is that we've more accurately forecasted this year?
That's right.
All right. I recommend the board approve the financial statement for March 2019.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any questions? None? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, board. Item six, excuse me, I recommend the board approve the following consent items related to out-of-state field trips and disposal of property.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Commentary? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven hundred, business. I recommend the board approve the low bid from Turf Management LLC in the amount of $184,490 for lawn maintenance services as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Questions? They're doing a good job earlier, outside the door.
Yeah, we did.
We're gonna prove you didn't, so we're gonna blow right outside the door during the work.
That's our dollar.
I'd point out, Dr. Martin has separated the lawn maintenance service, that's general lawn maintenance, from athletic field maintenance, you approved that last month, this is for the general lawn maintenance, and what may be one of the closest bids I've seen, so we had a very competitive bid, and processed this one, and I say, next month, we'll bring you one more that's related to the chemical fertilizing, things like that. Anything else you might know?
And we're not putting Steve's address in, I like, he asked, we're gonna leave that one out.
I blew it at the high school.
Any questions? All in favor?
Item V, I recommend the board approve the contract with Turf Management LLC in the amount of $184,490 for lawn maintenance services as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Just a contract for the prior? Any questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, I recommend the board approve change order number seven with Blaylock Building Company Incorporated in the amount of $161,147.90 for renovations for a new middle school package fee, building addition and renovations as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Commentary? What do we approve in here?
That's the last one, right, Brian?
This is the last, he said it was the last, right? You signed that in blood, I think, is it, right? The last change order ever?
I'm hoping next month's the last. So there were about 20 items in here, I'll get a couple of the big ones. So in our kitchen and serving line areas when we originally did this project, we were going to just patch our floor tile in there due to necessary plumbing and electrical modifications needed for the new kitchen layout. By the time we got in there and kind of transposed the areas we needed to, it was probably about a 50% patch, 50% replacement, so it was determined, let's go ahead and replace all the tile and make it neat and clean and pretty again. So a big portion of this is for that. Another big portion is for structural modifications, retrofit, retrofit fit, got in there, ripped the ceilings out as we moved through these buildings, continued in, continuing to find some areas that need some structural modifications that were unforeseen due to the ceilings being in there, so that we were about through all those buildings now and finding all those surprises, so that should wrap up the structural modifications hopefully.
Any other questions?
I just, I think we're addressing things now that we have the time to do, that would have to be done when school was in session, or in future summers, so.
Yeah, that's right.
I think we're hitting it.
Right.
So that they can move in and have a nice new school.
It's gonna be more costly if you do them later.
Yeah.
And disruptive. Any other comments? Anyone? All in favor?
Aye. Item D, I recommend the board approve the principal employment contract for Abby Freeman as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And for members, we went through a, what I think was a very healthy and strong process for selecting Ms. Freeman for the position. We had teachers on our committee, and a parent on our committee, and central office staff, and it was a very healthy conversation. To help me, I bring to you a recommendation, as I told the faculty at Liberty Park today, the recommendation's not because Ms. Freeman is already here and we're just handing it the keys to her, she earned the position and has a fantastic background that brings to us. We hired her last year, Ty did, and we had that conversation last summer, is Ms. Freeman that person that could step in, so it was a good opportunity to interview for a solid year, the position, so. She has it extremely well in what has been a unique situation this year, so brings a lot of unique experiences, I think, to the table for us, and will be a great leader for the school. We had great input during the process, I met with PTO at one point, met with the faculty at one point, to bring all of those ideas to the table as we make this selection, so I'm very pleased to bring this recommendation to you. And I do, I do wanna say for the record that Ms. Freeman and I are not related, there's no, there's no issues of kinship or consanguinity, I'm all for this, so it's certainly acceptable for me to make that recommendation today.
I'd just like to say that last year, when we brought you aboard, my friend Bill Cleveland was irritated that we were able to get you, so anytime we can stick it to Bill down the hill, I'm all for that, so that's a, that's a good thing. That is on recording, and I'll say it. Any other questions?
There's no pressure on Ty for her performance.
You've had a great year, she'll do a great job.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
One more.
All right. Item E, I recommend the board approve the St. Xavier Hills City Schools' summer programming compensation as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Commentary? Questions?
It's this far middle school and high school, right? Ms. Brown?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, I recommend the board approve the personnel actions as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation on personnel actions, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Court members? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That is it. This time, I'd like to offer the floor for public comment. Anyone want to make a comment, feel free to do so. Anyone want to comment, feel free to do so. State your name and address and limit your comments, please, to the agenda items. Anyone? Anyone? Deal with it? All right, if they're being done, we return.